Alright, good evening, everybody. We have our call to order September 28, 2020, regular business meeting of Board of School Trustees. The start time of 6:02 this evening. It's been a while between our last meeting and now. If I could all rise, we're going to ask Mr. Hoffman to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, item 1.03 on the agenda, we have a couple of very prestigious awards. We have Ms. Marian Chapko, retired elementary principal, the recipient of the Sagamore of the Wabash Award from Governor Holcomb for her career in education. We're also gonna have an award for Jesse Mendez, Crown Point High School junior, House Resolution being named a state champion wrestler. Miranda Elsh, Crown Point graduate, was a House Resolution being named a 2020 softball player of the year and All-American. So I think the best way to handle it, we talked briefly before the meeting. Ms. Beck, are you out there? I'm looking for you. Thank you for joining us. Thanks for helping present the awards. Could I...
I'm gonna turn this around that someplace.
I was gonna come down and join you, but we're a little bit behind, so I'll stay up here.
It's okay if I take my mask off. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to, for all three of these awards. And I just want to say that with every single one of the awards that you're gonna hear tonight, it really is about the Crown Point community and families working together to just do great things. I also would like to thank the school board and the administration for allowing me to come in and to do these awards. You know, when COVID hit, some of these awards, we had to put them on hold. So I really appreciate, thank you guys, for allowing me to come in tonight. The first one that I would like to present is an award that was actually awarded by the governor, Eric Holcomb, and this was the Sagamore of the Wabash Award. I would like to just give a little brief explanation of the Sagamore. The Sagamore is a term borrowed from Algonquin-speaking American Indian tribes of the northeastern United States. Used to describe a lesser chief or great man in the tribe to whom the chief could not, could look to for wisdom, advice, guidance. The award is given to those who render distinguished service to the state. The Sagamore states that the honoree is distinguished by his or her humanity in living, his or her loyalty and friendship, his or her wisdom and counsel, and his or her inspiration and leadership. Former honorees include astronauts, musicians, and politicians. Tonight, we are awarding somebody who is, you know, was a teacher, an administrator, the principal at Eisenhower Elementary School. And, which by the way, I went there for kindergarten, just like I said. And, you know, what a great, it just, you know, what a great award for somebody who is part of public education. So I also wanted to read something. Because of COVID, normally we submit for the Sagamore Awards because the governor is the one that awards them. And we put all the information that we can, you know, to try to get the Sagamore. And this year, because of COVID, there was a, you know, there was a stutter, if you want to call it. I mean, the governor was obviously focusing on things that were outside of the Sagamore Award. But I don't want to embarrass Marian Chapko's at all. However, her husband sent this in. Now, keep in mind that we already sent the award in because she has won other awards. In fact, I actually met Marian Chapko here when the board was recognizing her for an award with the Northwest Indiana, let me say exactly what it was. The Influential Women of Northwest Indiana Award for Education. So this is not somebody who's never had an award before. But I want to read to you what he had said. And this is what he had sent to me and what I forwarded to the governor. "When I initially reached out to seek a nomination for my wife for a Sagamore of the Wabash Award, as she reaches the culmination of her long career in education, I could never have predicted she would be leaving her school, teachers, students, and staff without being able to say goodbye. I've had the unique opportunity to actually witness how she interacts with her teachers and students as she has been in her home office during these many weeks of the worldwide pandemic. I have witnessed that it has been no easy feat for principals to lead their teachers, students, and parents into a whole new world of education. I believe she is actually working harder than ever to personally ensure each of her students stay on the right educational track and continue to grow academically while working at home. She is continually providing emotional support and guidance to everyone she talks to." I've actually become a little jealous, Mac said, because she rarely unplugs from her electronics in her unwavering attempt to keep everything as normal as possible during an unprecedented abnormal time. I'm sure she did not expect that the final months of her career, a career that lasted four decades, would have her missing her students, staff, and parents so much that it's painful. I know that, you know, we've gone through a lot and the board has been on top of and made some decisions based on something that we had no idea how to even maneuver through, which was COVID-19 pandemic. So I would like to read the award and to have Marian Chapko come up at this point. The award is from the state of Indiana Council of the Sagamore of the Wabash, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of the state of Indiana. "Noah, all men, by these presents, whereas the greatness of the sons and daughters of Indiana derives in part from qualities possessed by the noble chieftains of the Indiana tribes which once roamed its domain; and whereas it has been the immemorial custom of the state of Indiana to attract to its support those who have exhibited such qualities; and whereas there has endeared herself to the citizens of Indiana, one Marian Chapko, distinguished by her humanity in living, her loyalty and friendship, her wisdom and counsel, and her inspiration and leadership. Now therefore, recognizing her greatness and desiring to avail myself of her counsel, I do hereby appoint her a chieftain upon my staff with the rank and title of Sagamore of the Wabash." My honor to give it to you. Step out of here without hurting myself.
I bet you want me to say something. That was beautiful. That second letter, I, oh. Thank you so much. It's, when I was 19, I'll tell you a little story. When I was 19 and I was at IUN, my major professor, Dr. Louis Simonillo, had me as a student and he gave me a goal before I graduated. He, I was named the, can't even remember what it's, outstanding future educator for the state of Indiana. And he said to me, "I want you to be a Sagamore one day." I didn't know what a Sagamore was, but he said, "I want you to work toward it." And I said, "Well, I'll try my best." And he said, "Just be, do everything you can for all the students you have, whoever they may be, throughout your career." And then about 10 years after that, he hired me to work at IU. So I moved up and got to be the director of student teaching and field experiences. So I had about 1,000 students that I taught to be teachers that, and some became administrators as well. So it was a real honor to have that. And then eventually, I came to Eisenhower and Crown Point for 24 years. And I always said, "I never want to be a principal." Well, that was the biggest piece of my career, was to do that for 24 years. So, and all I felt so honored to work with children and adult students. And it all comes down to every single teacher that ever affected me or that I worked with or that I taught, a future teacher, they're all a piece of this award. It's not me, it's everybody that experiences, the people behind me that worked with me at Crown Point. We all take all those pieces together and I'm grateful. I'm just incredibly honored, so. And I was telling Representative Beck, softball, Facebook is an interesting thing when somebody posts something on it. And I had a multitude of students from my first years of teaching at St. Peter and Paul School in Maryville, Indiana, and that was over 40 years ago. And I had probably 25 students comment on Facebook. And I just really, wow, you remember me? So it's just been truly honored, so thank you very much.
Ms. Chapko, thank you very much again for all of your service with us. And it's unfortunate that we weren't able to celebrate some of the retirement gatherings that we would have been able to pass, but thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Beck, for awarding, presenting the award to Ms. Chapko.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the family of Miranda here? Oh, you are, okay, good. The next award that I want to present is a proclamation because one of Crown Point's own, Miranda Elsh, was awarded in her senior year at the University of Texas, an award for the 2020 Shortened Season National Player of the Year by Softball America, which is pretty impressive. But I just wanted to say, if we have anyone here who has never met her, I just want to say a little bit about her. She was a 2016 graduate of Crown Point High School. When COVID happened and the season was cut short, the Division One Council announced that they would grant an additional season of eligibility to athletes in the spring sports. And I guess Miranda tweeted out immediately that she was definitely gonna do it because, you know, her dedication to the team and, I mean, she's just a great athlete. One of the things that she had stated, the Times, I'm sorry, the Chicago Tribune had said, that being, Miranda had stated, being a national player of the year was one of her personal goals. She, she has a sister who's a senior, who's a pitcher at Crown Point. Her name's Maddie. And then she also has a younger brother who, at the time of the article, is 12, so I'm not sure, you guys will have to let me know if he's had a birthday. But his name is Brady. As a senior at Crown Point High School, she was Miss Softball. And she also, for three years in a row, was the Gatorade State Player of the Year. And then she had this awesome quote, which I'm gonna recite it. "Things happen for a reason, even if they don't make sense right now. Once we get back to the interacting and doing things we normally do, we'll really come together as a community, as college sports world, and happily our world." And, you know, I think, you know, having had your senior year cut short, I think that that's, you can see what kind of a person that Miranda is. So I am gonna read the proclamation because it goes more into what all of her achievements, if you guys would like to come up. So this is a proclamation by the Indiana House of Representatives. Whereas Miranda was born September 30th in 1997, she started playing softball at the age of six and started pitching when she was nine years old. Miranda played the game at its highest level as a youth, winning the prestigious PGF National Championship as a 16-year-old, as well as a 2014, 2015, and 2016 Gatorade Player of the Year for Indiana, which recognizes the nation's most outstanding high school student athletes for their athletic excellence, academic achievement, and exemplary character. Miranda was also recognized as the 2016 Miss Softball for Indiana. Miranda began her collegiate career in 2017 with the University of Oregon Ducks as one of their right-handed pitchers. And at the end of 2018, Miranda signed with the University of Texas to play for the Longhorns for her junior and senior year. Miranda was recognized as the 2017 Pac-12 All-Freshman Team, 2018 Pac-12 First Team All-Conference, 2018 and 19 All-American, 2019 Big 12 First Team All-Conference, and the 2020 Softball America Player of the Year where she plays for the University of Texas at Austin. Miranda is sixth in the country and wins with an 11.3 record and a 1.25 earned run average, ERA, as opponents hit 158 against her. Miranda struck out 96 hitters in 84 innings, only allowed 17 walks, and tied for 12th in the country for pitching four shutout games. Miranda finished the season with a batting average of 370 on the year with seven doubles, four home runs, 19 runs batted in, and had a, how do you say that, 1.2?
Yeah.
Okay. 1.2 of an on-base-plus slugging, the OPS. Miranda led the Texas Longhorns to the publication's number-one ranking in a shortened season due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Miranda, with one year left at the University of Texas, has the goal of winning a national championship. Upon graduation, she would like to open a training center for teaching youth pitching, hitting, and fitness. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 121st General Assembly of the state of Indiana that we honor Miranda on her remarkable softball career, which has led her to win the 2020 Player of the Year and an All-American. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
On behalf of Miranda, I know she would be very happy to be here and she's very honored to get this award. So thank you very much.
And thank you guys too, because I know that parents put a lot behind the scenes to make it happen.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, and last, I want, not least, I would like to give a resolution that we did for Jesse Gomez, or Mendez, I'm sorry. But before I do it, before I give the award, Jesse, would you come up? So Jesse, as a freshman, won state, and as a sophomore, he won state. So we have an award for him, but because his original award was so big, we kind of condensed some of it, but I don't want to condense it for you tonight. So I'm gonna read to you the House Resolution that we did last year. A House Resolution congratulating Mr. Jesse Mendez on his 2019 state championship title in wrestling. Whereas Crown Point High School freshman Jesse Mendez finished his first high school season by winning the 2019 IHSA title in the 126-pound weight class. Whereas Mendez pinned Western High School freshman Hayden Shepherd in 1 minute and 2 seconds and Mount Vernon High School senior Chase Wilkerson in 3 minutes and 58 seconds during the quarterfinals. Whereas Mendez was a 13-4 major decision against Jim Towne High School senior Hunter Watts in the semifinals. Whereas Mendez went 6-0 against Avon High School junior Raymond Rue, is that how you say his name?
Ree.
Ree, Reece?
Like Rio.
Okay, Rio. To win the championship and finish with a 42-0 season. Of course, he's gonna know how to pronounce the guy that he beat, okay? Whereas the championship title for Mendez is the latest of many achievements already earned by this young wrestler, who started wrestling as a young child and has competed across the nation in becoming a stronger athlete and a more formidable competitor. Whereas Mendez is recognized by his Crown Point wrestling coach, Mr. Brandon Lorik, as having attributes key to great wrestling. He's fast, strong, physical, smart. He listens very well, he's very coachable, and a student of the sport. And whereas the IHSA title culminates years of dedication, passion, and hard work, and foreshadows many more years of achievement to come. Therefore, that the Indiana House of Representatives congratulates Mr. Jesse Mendez on his 2019 state championship title in wrestling. And then I'm going to read the new award, which I should have bought a frame that like folds down for next year. Adopted by voice vote on March 9, 2020 during the second regular session of the 121st General Assembly. A House Resolution congratulating Mr. Jesse Mendez on his 2020 state championship title in wrestling. Crown Point High School sophomore Jesse Mendez finished his second high school season by winning the 2020 IHSA title in the 132-pound weight class. Mendez ranked number one by Indiana Matt, squared off against number-two-ranked Matthew Kuntz of Perry Meridian High School. A repeat championship title for Mendez is the latest of many achievements already earned by this young wrestler. And House Resolution 24 recognized Mendez in 2019 for his accomplishments. And it is fitting that the Indiana House of Representatives recognizes the young wrestler and his continued success. Be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the General Assembly of the state of Indiana to that they congratulate Mr. Jesse Mendez on his 2020 state championship title in wrestling, that the principal clerk of the House of Representatives shall transmit copies of the resolution to Mr. Jesse Mendez and his family. I do have copies if you want to. I don't know if the school wanted them, but here you go, Jesse.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Crown Point School Board for having me and the Crown Point community. You guys have always been so supportive of me throughout my career. And it's just, it's always an honor to come out here and get to see the community and just really appreciate it of all of you. Thank you.
Thanks again, Ms. Beck. How about Coach Trill, do you have anything to say about Miranda or Jesse? And I'm sure Coach Lorik will have something to say in a couple of minutes, but...
I think she said everything, I mean, Miranda, assistant for Mendez, everything, her accomplishments. Glad about Miranda, she's even a better person. Same thing is true for this one. Can't say enough about her.
Thank you, Coach. Congratulations, Jesse. Thank you, Ms. Beck, for presenting the award.
Board of School Trustees, Resolution, Accommodation, Awards, Act. Item 2.01 is Jesse Mendez for being named the state champion in the 132-pound weight class of 2020. I'm not sure if our accommodation is gonna read so fluid. This is that one, but we also have 2.02 is Noah, is it Holland Donner? I don't think he's here tonight, but Noah Holland Donner for being named the state runner-up in the 160-pound weight class at the 2020 IHSA Individual Wrestling State Finals. And 2.03, Logan Frazier for placing third in the 113-pound weight class at the 2020 IHSA Individual Wrestling State Finals. Item 2.04, we have the CPHS 1920 Wrestling Team for being named the 2020 state team runner-up. That team was Sam Goan, Logan Frazier, Jesse Mendez, Riley Fettich, Candace Morgan, Nick Totini, Orlando Cruz, Seth Williams, Noah Holland Donner, Stephen Roberson, Jr., Aaron Ayala, Matt Kelroy, Jacob Woods, Jack Reese. Coaches were Brandon Lorik, assistant coach Bill Hawkins, Nick Bruno, Lo Lamore, and Vince Sessa. At item 2.05, we have the Crown Point High School Athletic Department for receiving the, was it the National Athletic Trainer Association Safe Sports School Designation by the association. Athletic Director Bill Derula and Director Matt Caleb, Assistant Athletic Director Mary Roth, and Electric, who is the Athletic Department Secretary. 2.06, CPTV and the Dog Radio dot com for winning multiple state Midwest national awards during the 1920 school year. Best television school newscast, best student multimedia website, and the Radio School of the Year runner-up from the Indiana Association of Student Broadcasters. Best newscast from the Midwest Media Educators Association, and the Crystal Pillar Award for the best newscast, newscast, and live event sports broadcast at Chicago Midwest Competition from the National Association of Television Arts and Sciences. We'll introduce those members when we get to their awards. Do we have a motion to approve the commendations this evening?
So moved. Second?
It was moved by Mr. Babjack, second by Mr. Hoffman. Any questions or comments before we say vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 5-0. So let me say, normally, pre-COVID time with the awards, we would all come forward and read accommodations, handshakes, congratulations. But it looks like we're gonna have a little bit of a different setup since it's the first meeting back with commendations. So how about I start by, so Noah is not here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but we have Jesse and Logan. Jesse and Logan are, I know Jesse's here, Logan, are you out there?
Yeah, here's Logan.
Logan? You guys want to step forward to the podium? I don't think I need the mic, I think everyone can hear me okay. So what I'm gonna do is unread the commendations to the two of you simultaneously, simultaneously. Hope nobody minds, I need to pull this down to get a little louder.
Resolution, Accommodation, the Crown Point Board of School Trustees is honored to commend Jesse Mendez, along with Logan Frazier, for meritorious achievement. Be hereby resolved that the Board of School Trustees for the Crown Point Community School Corporation whispers to express sincere congratulations to Jesse, 1920 Crown Point High School, for being named state, sorry, this is the team, this is the team out here, team runner-up? And, okay. And along with Logan Frazier, being named state team runner-up, and for being named Jesse was state champion of the 132 pounds, and we had Logan for placing third in the 113 pounds. The weight classes for the individual award at the 2020 IHSA Wrestling State Finals. The Board of School Trustees publicly recognizes this achievement, renders it permanently to its ministers to preserve public posterity dated this 28th day of September, 2020.
Jesse, again, congratulations, and Logan, great job. Coach Lorik, can you have a couple of words that we could share for the wrestlers?
Yeah, I just wanna, as Jesse said before, I wanted to thank all, thank everyone for all their support. The team had a great run, these two individuals, Jesse and Logan, had a fantastic state tournament. Both worked extremely hard to get bonus points, which in our sport is extremely important. And to do it at the high level that they were doing it was phenomenal, which led to our success. Logan had an extremely important match Saturday morning against a wrestler from Evansville Modern Day. And that was one of the matches that led us to being able to come home with a state runner-up trophy. I know both these gentlemen are looking forward to going back down there this February and doing just a little bit better and hopefully bring home a first-place trophy. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Logan and Jesse, Coach, let Ms. Green take a picture of you guys, or of you guys. If you guys want to stay up here as well, we might as well, Coach Lorik, we don't need to read the commendation all over again, but I think as a board, Jesse, you said something about being honored to be here. And for us, it's an honor for you to come. It's quite an achievement, not just you and Logan and Noah, but Mr. Babjack and I, they were talking about to be second in state with a darn good chance of winning. I mean, you guys, you were right on the doorstep of being state champions. It's quite an achievement. And I think, you know, going back to my days in school, you guys, when you take that opportunity to be leaders in the school and role models, that makes all of us proud as well. And any parents that are out there, I'm sure you would agree with that. And parents who are here, as someone said earlier, it's a lot of work getting through the practices and it's a commitment and travel. So everybody involved, just, Coach, congratulations to your team last year.
Thank you.
And best luck in the future. I'm sure you guys are gonna be back, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to say one thing, Coach Lorik. I know you're proud of the accomplishments that your boys have on the mat, but they're awesome, they're awesome people as well. We see them at the local tournaments when we have them at Crown Point, you know, helping coach for the young kids in the program. You know I have two boys in the program. And they still talk about when Jesse coached them two years ago, you know, during one of their tournaments at the high school. And so Jesse, that was, you know, it's very cool that you guys are active and I'm sure you are as well. And I appreciate you guys, everything that you're doing. High-character athletes that you guys bring them up. And that means a lot. I'm proud of that.
Thank you.
Did you team award, and you're an individual, you're an underneath that?
Awesome, thank you very much, everyone. Nice job, guys.
And then Coach Derula and anybody else here with you this evening?
Yes, I brought both of our athletic trainers, Dan Merrill and Jamie Pierce. They're really responsible for this award. We're lucky to have two of the best trainers, I think, in the state. You know, we have 1,000 athletes and they keep our kids healthy. And they're the ones that were responsible for getting this award for us, to save schools. So I'd like them to go up and...
Thank you, please come forward. I may have mumbled or stuttered to the last one, so let me give this a clean read for you guys, okay? Resolution, Accommodation, the Crown Point Board of School Trustees is honored to commend the Crown Point High School Athletic Department for meritorious achievement. Be hereby resolved that the Board of School Trustees for the Crown Point Community School Corporation whispers to express sincere congratulations to the Crown Point High School Athletic Department for being awarded the NATA Safe Sports Designation by the National Athletic Trainer Association. We have Director Bill Derua and Matt Caleb's not here, and Mary Roth. And then could you guys repeat your names, please, one more time?
Jamie Pierce.
And Dan Merrill.
Thank you, Jamie and Dan, congratulations and keep up the great work. It's always great to be honored on a safety, safety award.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hand it over to Mr. Angel for our last commendation.
Now, Ms. Thorff, is anybody, any of the students here tonight?
Yes.
They are? If we could have those students come forward, please, just by the podium, be wonderful. Oh, just one of you, I'm sorry. Sarah, is that her?
Oh, Sarah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure so I had the names. So, combination award reads as follows, and I'm going to read all the individual's name when I get to that section. Crown Point Board of School Trustees is honored to commend for meritorious achievement. Being hereby resolved that the Board of School Trustees for the Crown Point Community School Corporation wishes to express sincere congratulations to Chris Gloff, 2019-2020 CPT Dog Radio, and all of the team members, and Brett Barber, for receiving best television school newscast, best student multimedia website, radio school of the year runner-up from the Indiana Association of Student Broadcasters, best newscast from the Midwest Media Educators, Educations Association, and for receiving the Crystal Pillar Award for best newscast and live event sports broadcast at the Chicago Midwest Competition from the National Association of Television Arts and Sciences. The Board of School Trustees publicly recognizes this achievement and renders it permanently to its minutes to be preserved for public posterity dated this 28th day, September 2020. Students include Sebastian Zenowitz, Rocco John, Madeline Massey, Armando Bracco, Brianna Morton, Kirsten Robinson, Zach Jones, Jenna Milash, Olivia Bianco, Jonathan Lieber, Kayla Dill, Sarah Frey, Frye?
Sarah Frey.
Sarah Frey, Alex Kretz, Blake Pish. And our advisors are Chris Gloff and Brett Barber, who are behind our cameras tonight working on that livestream for the first time. So what a wonderful accomplishment for all those awards. It kind of seems foolish, we're giving, you know, just one commendation for like 12 different awards. But that, I don't know if anybody's ever been to the high school and seen our studios for whether it's the news, newsroom, where they do the live newscast, where they've seen Dog Radio Studios. It is state-of-the-art and top-notch, and Mr. Barber and Mr. Gloff do a great job as far as making sure that these students are prepared to go into that line of work or that field for furthering their education. Just an outstanding accomplishments based on all these awards. So on behalf of the board, congratulations.
Thank you.
We need you guys in on the photo op. Can I see a picture right here? Well, thank anyone and everyone who came out for our commendations tonight, continued success of all of our programs, and it's nice to get back to. We had a few this evening, it's nice to get back to, seeing our students and commending them for their hard work and achievements. Item three, we have patron comments. We're going to start with 3.01, a review of the policy 167.3, public participation at board meetings. We asked Dr. Terrell to lead us through that.
So I'm going to pass these down. If you guys could take one just to have in front of you. As Mr. Warreni and I were going through the agenda last week, one of the things that I reflected back on was, early on in the interview process with all of you, is I was in the process of coming here to Crown Point, I remember you guys had a question that was about, what are my feelings about the public speaking at board meetings? And I thought to myself, where is this going? But then through conversations with you, I know that all of you have shared concerns of trying to work through a platform where our public can come and make comments. So what I want to do tonight is just look at some of the key things that I think are really important for you to consider, and then ultimately, once we're done with this discussion, if there's a direction that you would like to, for me to go as far as trying to create some language to bring back to you for your approval, that we can consider for board meetings as we move forward. For the public who is out there, this is bylaw 0167.3, and it is entitled Public Participation at Meetings. One of the things that I want to draw your attention to, if you look down, you can see any person, group wishing to speak, A, B, C. Right underneath that, it talks about the superintendent and board president can approve who can speak, but it says that they are permitted fair and orderly expression directly related to agenda items. First thing I'd like you to consider is that public comment does not need to be only about agenda items. So giving people the opportunity to come, and if there's a concern that they have that isn't listed on one of our agenda items, right now it's restricted to only the agenda, giving people the opportunity, sticking within the guidelines that are listed below, the following rules of public participation shall be permitted as indicated on order of business, so where it's listed in the agenda. Attendees must register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting or prior, prior to the meeting. C, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by the announcement of their name, address, group affiliation, when, if and when appropriate. D, each statement made by participant shall be limited to three minutes duration. E, concerns about the corporation, personnel, and/or students are to be directed to the superintendent and are not appropriate during public participation. F, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. And then G, the presiding officer may prohibit public comments which are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing, interpret warm, or terminate the person's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request an individual leave a meeting if they, if it becomes disruptive. Request assistance of law enforcement, call for recess, adjournment. Six, waive these rules when approval of the board is necessary. And I think those last ones are pretty drastic measures, but definitely things that we need to have in place just in case a situation would arise. H, then, again, my recommendation to you is that you continue with the 20 minutes of time that is set aside for public comments, and again, unless it is extended by vote of the board. So my recommendation would be, as we get up to that 20-minute mark, if we see that there are additional people who are waiting to speak, that we actually take a vote from the board to approve, whether that's all of them, whether it's another 20 minutes, 10 minutes, whatever it might be, just so that we have that on record. But what I would like for you to consider this evening, as I mentioned before, is to look at and bring suggested changes to this policy based on our conversation that we're going to have right now. And then, once we kind of get through that and come to a landing point this evening, that you approve allowing people to speak regarding the issues that are at hand that aren't based on the agenda, if that's where our discussion leads us, even this evening. And if so, at that point in time, we'll have people sign up who have not signed up at this time, based off of it needed to be directed at an agenda item. So for your consideration tonight, I recommend that you have a conversation based around, do we allow public comments, first and foremost, that are not directly related to the agenda items only. They can still be a part of that comment, for sure, but if there are other issues that they'd like to bring before the board, that they're permitted to do so.
So let's begin by looking for a motion to approve that recommendation to receive comment this evening on items that aren't on the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that, first up?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Mr. Babjack, and second by Mr. Angel. And then now we can have some questions or comments or discussions about anything else pertaining to the future of board policy.
What, Todd, what is the basis of, it's like the second paragraph, registering their intent no later than 14 days prior to a meeting?
Yeah, I think that that's, that's a great point. I'm not sure that they need to register 14 days before. We like to have some kind of heads up, but at the same time, I don't, I don't think we restrict that from if people show up the night of a meeting. Part of the problem with this is, if we limit that to that 14 days prior to, what about all the stuff that happens in between? And how do we hear from our constituents about that?
My suggestion would be to make that like 48 hours. My concern about commenting on anything at any time is that we may be revisiting things that occurred a year ago. If it's current, I don't, I don't have a problem. But if we go back, oh, last year you did this or that, the other thing, that's not productive. So I would suggest we change that to 48 hours, so that we have an idea of what's, what the issues are, number one, so we, we're in a position to better understand the issue, or obviously, we did, we did not respond to these things in the, in this particular meeting, so, but it would be nice to have a better understanding of what the issue is and what's, what may be behind it.
Anybody else see, I would like to say, I mean, other than just what we've mentioned for this evening, that I, since it's a discussion about what this board policy should look like in the future, I think that we should, I think we should keep the three minutes and, as you said, and keep the 20-minute cap, and in any given circumstances, you know, tonight, for example, if we run against that number, we can pause and look for a motion to extend if necessary, depending on where we're going with things. I, on the second page, I paper video recordings. I just think that as we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but later in the meeting, we may be discussing the streaming of the meetings, so maybe just to clean things up, that might be able to be deleted. Is that possible, if we're going to be streaming a meeting? Is it necessary to have I in the next board policy?
Well, I would tell you, by state statute, and I'll look to my attorney friends that are sitting up here with me, I believe by Indiana statute, anyone has the right to record, as long as one person being themselves is aware that that recording is taking place. But I'll, to Tom or Brian...
Something else that we could clean up before we actually, because we're going to be voting probably at the next meeting on a new policy to become permanent.
If we need further clarification, we can get that before the next meeting. Yep. Or the approval.
So, any more discussion?
Yeah, I would welcome the opportunity to have items spoken about that's not on the agenda. I do think the process is important. Three minutes is appropriate. I would agree with the 20-minute threshold, and if it's an important factor, then we can extend that by board motion. I would also agree with Tom's recommendation, and I think it's proper to have some notice, some formal notice in advance. 14 days may be a bit excessive, especially since we're meeting once a month. So I would agree with Tom that the idea to revisit that issue on, as far as maybe 48 hours, 72 hours, something like that, prior to the meeting, so we have some advance notice would be appropriate.
Any other discussion? So if not, let's wrap up the vote on hearing comment this evening outside of the agenda if necessary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you, Dr. Terrell.
So before we go on to the next part, if there's anybody here who would like to speak, who didn't sign up because it had to be based off of the agenda, if you could raise your hand, my assistant Diana will come around and have you sign the paper for tonight. Thank you.
Once, once this signature sheet makes it around the room, then we'll just take the clipboard and go in order from, from the top, and just to keep it professional, Ms. Rakiwa, would you mind being the timekeeper if necessary on a, I mean, I don't know if we'll get there or not, but if we just...
Tough job.
We just reviewed the policy, so we might as well follow what it says.
Ms. Rakiwa, you want to give us a two-and-a-half-minute warning, and then like a 10-second warning? There we go. So that way, everybody's consistent across, and perfect. Thank you.
You don't have to play walk-off music, or you think you're good.
You might want to show him how to use the timer on his phone.
I'd have been in the same boat.
As we're preparing for this, one of the things that I think is also important, as we talk about the participation in board meetings, this isn't necessarily a public meeting, it's a meeting that is held in public, and with this opportunity for input from our community, so we thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, so Candace Jordan, if you'd mind stepping forward or standing up, and just pronounce your names so we can hear it with your...
Is it okay if I pull my mask down? Candace Jordan. I have a junior at Crown Point High School. My daughter Holly Jordan. She, at the end of her sophomore year, had a 4.4 GPA cumulative. She was a Kiwanis Scholar her seventh, eighth, and freshman year. They did not have Kiwanis Scholars last year because of COVID. And she received, in the middle of COVID, taking her AP class, her AP test, two fives and a four. She then was awarded by College Board an AP Scholar Award, which means you've taken four AP classes and have a weighted average of at least four and a half. So my point isn't to brag about her, it's to tell you how smart she is, and also implore you to get rid of the hybrid as it is. She is struggling. Her mental health is not good, her physical health, she's sick to her stomach. So these students only get 37 minutes per course twice a week. So that's one hour and 14 minutes. I teach college. My students get double that amount. She has five AP classes right now, which are college-level courses. She gets less instruction than college students. She's struggling, and I'm begging you to please do something different in terms of the hybrid. Why aren't, you know, the kids go on Monday, and then the kids Tuesday learn what the Monday kids learned. So she doesn't get, she gets two 37-minute-per-class instructions, and then she's given busy work. She's overwhelmed by the amount of the busy work, and she's overwhelmed by these courses that are college-level. So I feel like the school system is failing these kids. They're failing my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. February, Suma? Is it Summa, Suma?
Yep, Summa.
Summa.
It's good to see some familiar faces, Mr. Jim Fermi, and I'm actually, I don't know if he's going to like that I say this, but Mr. Gloff was my teacher when I was in high school. One of them. As much as showing up to speak today seemed irrelevant now, I still wanted to say thank you in person, as you've listened to our concerns and have put things in motion to move to green status. Releasing the document with the COVID data that you review before making these decisions was excellent, and this increased transparency and communication has been great, and we look forward to more of the same as we move ahead. As we see the trends from this outbreak, my husband and I feel that it's important to live as normally as possible while being cautious rather than living in fear of the worst. By the way, we have a junior and a first grader. That it's important to learn to live with COVID around rather than anxiously attempting to completely avoid it. Personally, we are grateful that the sports are in session. This outlet has been a saving grace and light at the end of the tunnel among this unusual school schedule, which has taken away most kids' daily social interaction. In some cases, parents are dealing with mental health issues now because of the lack of socialization. Most parents wouldn't want teachers to become even more overwhelmed from a hurried return to school. An overwhelming majority of us are glad that you've set dates for getting back in school. We see this as a positive move and a win, and most of us are fine with the October dates and are not necessarily urging the kids go back as soon as possible. There's one note, my junior has told me, he struggles with, you know, teachers are doing all that they can to not be overwhelmed themselves. However, on the student side, in one particular class, he has three different teaching styles to deal with for one class, and so as they try to lessen their workload, the kids sometimes are suffering. I served on PTA for Wheeler Middle School for two years, one of those years as president, so I understand that sometimes unpopular decisions need to be made. That said, I might mention a reminder here that when people are expected to follow directive, but they aren't made aware of the why behind the said decisions, that leaves a lot of room for assumption and potentially misplaced anger and frustration. Okay, to that end, I'd like to ask a question here to echo a remaining concern that I and some other parents still have, which is, why are we waiting until October 28th for secondary schools to return? According to my calculation, with that date of return, they'll be getting 16 days in-person before Thanksgiving break, 12 days until Christmas break, and then 16, six in-person days before this first semester is over, January 14th. Would you please share some details as to why are we are waiting longer? Why not get secondary schools back so they have more in-school time before the end of the semester? Thank you for the opportunity to be heard as parents who are dealing with the results of these decisions made by the board on a daily basis.
Thank you. Melissa Gleason?
Hello. I'm super nervous right now, and usually I'm not. I kind of in the same position as Candace. Actually, I'm a freshman, he's taken AP courses, pre-AP courses. Phenomenal student, amazing academically. Right now, he has Fs. He has several Fs right now. It's not the teacher's fault. I don't want to start pointing fingers. It's not his fault, it's not your fault. I don't know whose fault it is, but how are we going to figure this out? How are we going to move forward? How are you guys moving forward? What can we do to make it better? So, right now, we're going to go to green, October twenty-ninth, whatever date you guys decided. What if all of a sudden flu season comes around? We're in red. What are your plans right now? Are we going full hybrid? Is it going to be in-teacher Zoom courses? My niece goes to Saint Ignatius, downtown grade school. She goes to Zoom classes, first period English, then she has a passing period. Goes to a second period, passing period, so on and so forth. So she's getting teachers nonstop, full learning. My son, he's not. I don't, I'm not going to sit here and say it's your fault, your fault, your fault. But what we need to do is move forward. How do we correct this? What do we do? What are your plans? Being a little bit more communicating with everybody else. I know everybody has a certain job, you guys probably have jobs outside of this. Everything is a lot of different layers that everybody kind of plays into. But what we need to do is worry about Crown Point. Crown Point School, education, everything, we need to figure it out. I'm hoping that you guys could be a little bit more transparent with what is going to happen as we go forward. All of us have probably lived here for many years, have kids that are involved in school, sports. I'm just hoping that when my son goes to apply for college, you know, he wants to go to Notre Dame, are they going to get him, give him a pass? You know what? Twenty, twenty, you're okay. Your GPA does not matter. It does, but how do I, as a parent, I mean, are there different resources out there for the teachers? Is there more funding to give these teachers more help? What are you guys doing for the teachers? What are we going to do when we go to red? So that's where I'm at, but thanks. No, I'm good.
I'm sorry, I can't see the first name, but it looks like Munoz.
Yep.
So I kind of want to piggyback off of them. Knowing that our parents are going to be sending their kids to, you know, they're, they're going back to school. And I know as an educator, we have had plenty of children that were sent to school sick, sneezing in our faces and coughing. How will parents be held accountable knowingly knowing that they're sending their children to school sick? So that is something that you, you know, as you plan forward, what are you going, how are you going to inform that to parents? Because they do it. And now more than ever, especially with flu season coming on, that's a concern because what we might have looked at last year as just a simple cold might not be the case this year. So that's just something that I feel that needs to be stated for parents as our kids are coming back. The other thing I, I've repeatedly asked, and I'm kind of frustrated that it's not being done, is that I've asked that, you know, robocalls and emails be sent out to all of the parents to remind them that there is a school board meeting. As much as we all want to keep in mind that it's the fourth Monday of the month or, you know, but if it's December, it's this day, but if it's on this day, it's this day. It just would be nice to just remind parents, have it in our newsletters that go home with our students through their principals, hey, don't forget board meeting this month, if you can attend, please attend. And the other thing I wanted to bring out too is that I've reached out to district administration, two of them in particular, and I have not heard a response from them. And I think that if we're talking about transparency, a simple, I've heard, I got your email, I will get back to you, would be just appreciative because the administration has a job because we're paying our taxes. And if the administration answers to the board, then it is the board's responsibility to say to the administration when a parent reaches out to you, talk to them. If I'm reaching out to the superintendent, it's because I need to speak to him, not to the principal. I don't need the principal. My concerns are not to the principal, it's to superintendent because the superintendent is telling the, the building-level administrators what to do. And you tell the district administrators what to do. So I just feel that that is something that needs to be stated. I know that where I'm at, we have twenty-four hours to answer to a parent. Thank you, I have a minute. So within twenty-four hours, I respond. I may not have an answer, but I will say, I heard you, I will get back to you. And that's all I need to say, and that's what could have been told to me. Other than that, I do appreciate that, that Dr. Terrell did bring up that we should be able to speak on any comment that's not on the agenda, because that's really what we should be able to do as a parent. And then when we came in, two of us were not allowed to sign in, but these three ladies were, and the returning to school, none of that was in the agenda. So I'm just curious as to why some people were allowed to sign in, but some people were not. And something that prior to what was brought up with previously, with the, with the new change, why we weren't allowed, but some people were. So I'm, I'm just wondering that. Thank you.
I'd like to interject one comment at this point. You're, you're talking about transparency and communication. A little later on here, we're going to address communication. We are hiring a, a communications director, changing websites and the distribution of information, so that should help address a number of those issues.
And then as we call forward, is it Jen Menyar? Is it, by any chance, has somebody not been able to sign their name that would like to make comment?
Gentlemen in the hallway, give me a back.
Hi. I just want to say that I, as a parent and a teacher, appreciate how much more transparent our board has become with a new superintendent in place. Things are much different now than they've ever been before. Since I have been a teacher here, I've lived here my whole life. And I know that hybrid is hard on parents. It is, it's hard on the kids, it's hard on my kids at home. But in the schoolhouses, it's really wonderful for the kids in school and teachers being able to have so much more one-on-one time with kids. And I do agree there has to be a better way to fix all of this, but I too worry about going to red and then what. So I just, I agree with wanting them in school, they need to be in school, all the mental health things are so true. But as long as we could do it in the safest way, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Adam Greper?
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
So I come before you here today. Dr. Terrell, I appreciate your, your efforts here and stuff, and we, we come back on different things I do in the city. I said I was the Director of Communications for City of Crown Point, COVID test, or COVID nineteen Task Force, Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce here in Crown Point, but that's on my side time. My, my main time is I'm a father of three. I have three kids in three different schools here in Crown Point Community Schools. One in elementary, one in middle school, and one in high school. So we have our hands full, so, you know, part of the reason why I was here is we, we looked at, you know, the almighty Facebook that's out there and how people comment and, and how you guys are, are being treated to a capacity. You know, working at the city, I, I see that there isn't a guide for how we respond to COVID. You know, it's not, this is how we do it, this is how we're going to do it. I, I want to thank everybody here from, from Artie to the board, to Dr. Terrell, to Mark and everybody here to, you know, just thank you for, you know, taking this burden on us because it's tough. I mean, we do it at the city, it's, it's difficult, you're up at night. Scott, I know we had a comment on, you know, when you're doing it one way, you probably get some hate mail. And I see it on Facebook. You do it the other way, when you, you change your ways, you get a whole different type of hate mail out there. And it's not that the people hate you, but it's spirited. We're spending, we're sending our kids to, to a place where we want them to be safe. We need them to be safe, you know, school should be a safe thing. And same way, Artie, when we, and Mark and, and Dave Beck were there, when we work on these, you know, emergency response things with the school. Our main thing is to be, have our kids safe. We, we need to, you know, move forward. We, we can't live in a bubble. We know, we know there is. Do we have all the answers? Does anybody on this board have those answers? No, we do with what we think is best. So again, I don't, I feel for these feeling one minute, I got. So we, I, I feel and I agree with everybody in here. I've got three kids in the same household with all three different attitudes as it comes to, to hybrid. I got my straight A student who's struggling. She really is. I got my kid that hated school, absolutely hated. He's doing fantastic. He gets up, he's got his regiment, he does that. And then I got my kindergartner who doesn't know anything different. This is how it is.
Right.
But they're, they're all over the place. And, and what do you do? How do you do it different? Raise your kids all the same way and you're going to get three different attitudes, three different, you know, kids and likes and dislikes and, you know, different mentalities out there. So I know I'm cut short here, but, you know, we, we agree with everybody, but, you know, keep up the good fight. I know you guys, I know you guys sleep with it, same as we do at the city and other places. You know, we've had business owners that are crying back in the day when, ten seconds. So I, again, I applaud everybody here. So, you know, I thank, thank you for taking that burden for everybody here. I think together with some, some feedback and stuff, we can get to the right decision. So again, thank you, everybody.
If any of you have comments at this time, otherwise I've got just a few to wrap up this portion.
I, I have some comments. I just want to say thank you to all the parents. I, I want you to know that you are heard and we do appreciate what you say. It means a lot, it means a lot to us, we, we consider it. I'm a, just take this down. I'm a father of four. I have two children at the high school, one in middle school, one in elementary. And amongst, but the last gentleman just spoke, it's the same way across the board. Some want to stay home, some want to go. You know, I think the thing that I want to say and emphasize is that Crown Point is a great community. And we're great because we have great parents and we have great people that want to step up and do what's best for their kids and see, see that this school corporation be successful. And I think everyone's motives, everyone that spoke here today, nobody said anything that was not factual or true. I think there are mental health issues and there are things, and I've experienced that in my own home. You know, it's, it's, this has really impacted everybody differently. And so I, I just want to articulate that, you know, thank you for having the courage to come here and participating and caring. And, you know, we are doing the best job we can and we may not have been perfect. That's okay, we are doing the best we can. I can, I can assure you that, you know, we care about our schools and our, and our students, so at least speak on behalf of the board and administration. So hopefully we're moving in the right direction and we can, you know, continue to get better and work harder and make things better and improve it. So I appreciate all your patience. Everybody was very kind and considerate today, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Anybody else with a comment?
I was going to say thanks for no pickets. I, there was, I've been on the school board for eighteen years and back when we had to negotiate teacher contracts, I was the board president and they picketed my office, so it's not fun.
I think this, this was a good representation of, of all the different burdens that people are sharing within the community. So now, I mean, I think this is, we've talked about these different groups who would be affected the most, even back in the summer when we were contemplating what the plan was going to look like. We knew exactly who was going to be burdened the most. We knew it was, there was issues that parents were going to have, there was issues that teachers were going to have. So tonight was a good representation of that, so thank you.
Now, I just like, well, as a, as a board, some of our goals have been to be better communicators and be more transparent. You guys have heard us say that and to be called out for not doing a better job. It's, it's fine, we need to be better. And what, you know, we'll, we'll probably come across some later in the meeting, even this evening, with, you know, the agenda being posted on the website on the front, when it, you know, when the meeting is going to be on the website with a link to the agenda, you know, sometime on a Friday evening, hopefully consistently. The communications director, as, as Tom mentioned, and there's plenty, just modernizing ourselves as a corporation, as a board is, you know, the, the email, I've been a board member for seven years and emails that go to the board. I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it, but they went through probably three different hands before they got to a board member. And I'm not saying it was wrong at that time, but we need to modernize, modernize ourselves and, you know, we've made changes in just the last couple of weeks that, you know, all the board members are going to see the message to the board because we're all a part of the board equally.
We, we've had some, we've had philosophical differences with previous leaders within the organization and we make sure that the gentleman sitting in the far end of the table is in line with what the board wants. Transparency was a big deal. Is Ms. Munoz, are you, I can't see you. We, we have had some correspondence where I think I, I mentioned Todd and, and what you should look forward to in the very near future, and tonight was a good start of that. So appreciate having Todd here for sure.
I want to clarify one issue, and I know there was some communication within the community about the changing of tonight's meeting. Typically, we meet on the fourth Monday of the month. We were scheduled to be at the Indiana School Boards Association Fall Conference, which occurs every time of this year, so we had moved the meeting back a week. The Fall Conference went virtual, so we decided to change our meeting back to this week because it was the regular scheduled time. So that's, sorry for the confusion about that, but that was the justification for the changing of those dates.
So just in conclusion, we just want to thank you guys for those who are not able to attend tonight, the patience of our parents, of our students, of our teachers, of our staff members. As we continue to work through this, there's going to be some more bumps in the road, there's no doubt about that. We're just going to continue to try and work for the best end game for our students and trying to be as transparent as we can with data. I think you'll see that we're one of the few in the region and the state who are releasing the information that we are releasing and will continue to work towards that end as well. So appreciate you being here tonight. And I can tell you, this board is committed to communication, to being able to hear people and to change that culture. And we're going to do that, and it's not going to happen overnight, but we're going to continue to work through that. So thank you for being here.
Do you have a comment? I just asked, it's really small. No, I can't do that, it's against the law.
Yeah. Not against the law, but against practice and orders.
But if you hang around after.
Yeah, just hang around and talk to.
It's really simple, so yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay, let's move forward. Thank you, everybody. Let's move to item four, the consent agenda, Dr. Todd Terrell.
So for your consideration this evening, on our consent agenda, we bring to you the regular business meeting of the Board of Trustees, the minutes, the recurrent grant approval from and receive the Indiana Department of Education Alternative Ed Grant, the personnel agenda, and then the voucher registered checks as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. You've heard the recommendation. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
And moved by Mr. Angel and second by Mr. Gidek?
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries forth here. I know, I know we have one highly anticipated individual in the crowd this evening. If, Dr. Terrell, would you like to introduce?
Sure. So I would like Brooke Allen, if you'd stand right where you're at, please. We want to welcome Brooke here to Crown Point Community Schools. Brooke is going to be our new Director of Communications. She'll be responsible for communications. Website development, those in the room, if you've been on our website lately, you know it's, it needs some work. But then also with social media, both here at the district level, at all of our buildings, and will really lead the charge in that area. So we're really excited to have Brooke here. I know, again, this is one more step in moving in that direction of, we're a great school corporation, just taking this to the next level, but then how do we share our information and tell our story? So Brooke, we appreciate you being here this evening, look forward to working with you. Did your family have to go?
Oh, yes.
Okay. She has a little one, and she was going to try and make it, so we appreciate the effort. Though Brooke, welcome to Crown Point, we look forward to having you.
Welcome. I want to tell a quick story about that, when, after we had interviewed Dr. Terrell, I, I made a trip to Richmond to do some further background information checking on him and talk to a number of people. And at that time, I indicated to him that they had a great communications director at Richmond. I told him to bring her with him. Tried, tried, and tried, and failed, and that's why we had to go out and search, and we ended up with Brooke, and I think we're in good hands.
I do too.
Yep. By any chance, is there anybody else in the personnel agenda that would like to introduce themselves? I don't, just looking out there, some faces, no, just making sure. Thank you, Brooke, for coming out this evening. Item five, action items, we have the childcare agreement between the Crown Point City School Corporation, School Corporation and the South Lake YMCA, Mr. Hardman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you just said, I'm seeking your approval this evening for an agreement between the South Lake branch of the Crossroads YMCA and the Crown Point Community School Corporation. This is to provide childcare full day to students kindergarten through fifth grade, depending on what the levels that we are in as far as our status being green coming up and/or yellow and/or red. So we're excited about having this agreement with the, the YMCA.
Thank you, Mr. Hardman, for the recommendation to approve the agreement between the South Lake branch of the Crossroads YMCA and the Crown Point City School Corporation and the YMCA to provide childcare K through five students and K through five children. to provide childcare for K through five students and K through five children of Crown Point staff within the C P, uh, City School Corporation facilities. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Babjack, and second by Mr. Angel. Any questions or comments from Mr. Hardman?
My two comments. One, I have to abstain because I sit on the YMCA Board of Directors. But secondly, for those people who are not familiar with the YMCA childcare, the YMCA is the largest provider of childcare in the country. So, I think our children would be in good hands.
Thank you, Mr. Hardman.
Do you have any question about that?
No, sorry. You could check this after the.
How can we do that? I mean, that's a question about.
You, you can hang out, hang outside for a meeting if possible, or send a, an email to.
I'm approving that right now. I mean, it's hard to do that.
Sorry, so I'm just trying to follow the policy.
Just do a YMCA all day, but not just for.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed and opposed. Motion carries four zero. Abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardman. Uh, five point oh two, the policy revisions and additions. Title nine approval and adoption. Mr. Akewa?
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Um, this evening, we're presenting an updated policy. As you know, we work with Neola, uh, which is an organization that helps us update our policy and remain consistent with, uh, state code. There's been a recommendation to update the Title Nine standalone policy to remain consistent with Indiana code. Uh, the new policy is provided, uh, for implementing recent Title Nine regulations, uh, uh, promulgated through the Department of Education. Uh, these requirements went into effect August 14, 2020 with COVID. School corporations around the state of Indiana are trying to get this update up and locked in, uh, to their current policies. This is a standalone policy. It does not affect any of our other discrimination policies. That's important to know. Um, but in essence, uh, the regulations, uh, provide detailed, uh, requirements concerning Title Nine protections, as well as provisions for identifying, reporting, investigating, and making determinations of responsibility for acts of sexual discrimination or harassment. Uh, it also provides measures for, uh, remedies and sanctions, uh, in the event that this does occur. Um, specifically, we are required to appoint Title Nine coordinators that will lead any investigations should we receive any of these complaints or reports, uh, in addition to some protocols that we need to follow, uh, in the wake of such event. Uh, this is a unique situation. This evening, uh, we're asking that, uh, the board waive the second reading and approve, uh, this particular updated policy to get us current after this first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Akewa. You've heard the recommendation to, uh, approve the, to waive the second reading and approve the updates, the actions, the policy after the first reading? Do you have a motion?
I would move to approve, uh, actually waive the first reading of the, uh, modification, and then waive the second reading so that the policy goes into effect upon approving. Second?
Motion by Mr. Hoffman, and second by Mr. Angel. Do we have any other questions or comments from Mr. Akewa? No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Five zero. Mr. Akewa?
Thank you.
And five point oh three is a memo of understanding between the, uh, Crown Point City School Corporation and Crown Counseling. Mr. Jean Fermi?
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Uh, we are seeking approval to enter a memorandum of understanding with Crown Counseling to provide, uh, additional counseling services and mental health services for our students and families. This would be in addition to our current counseling services that we already offer. And, uh, this would fulfill the requirements of Senate enrolled Act 246, which requires school, um, corporations seek a partnership with a community mental health partner. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Jean Fermi. Uh, recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding between Crown City School Corporation and Crown Counseling. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Hoffman, and second by Mr. Smith.
Babjack.
I'm sorry, Mr. Babjack, second. Uh, any questions or comments from Mr. Jean Fermi? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay.
And also, uh.
Thank you.
Five point oh four, Mr. Jean Fermi, is the memo of understanding between the Crown Point City School Corporation and the Bethel Church for a uni- for a reunification site.
Yes, uh, we're seeking to accept a memorandum of understanding between Bethel Church and the Crown Point School Corporation in, in the, in the incident that we may need to reunify students with their parents at an off-site location. If there was an emergency at one of our schools, we have mapped out several locations. This is just another community partner we would like to add to our, our current safety planning.
Thank you, Mr. Jean Fermi. Heard the recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding with Bethel Church for a reunification site. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Smith, and second by Mr. Hoffman. Any questions or comments from Mr. Jean Fermi?
Just a comment for the benefit of the public. This is, when we're talking about reunification, this is in the event that something would occur in a school building, uh, for example, a gas leak, where you have to remove the students from that particular building and make contact with the parents. This is a different location where we would transport the children to Bethel Church if necessary, contact the parents, let them know that the children are Bethel Church, and we're adopting a process that, uh, procedure that would be in place in, on any such occasion, so that we make sure the children get back to the people they should be with, so.
You said this is one of several sites.
One of several, yes.
We're also using Crown Point High School, Wheeler Middle School, depending on what the occasion calls for.
Thank you, Mr. Jean Fermi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for, uh, Bethel Church for partnering up with us there also. Five point oh five is the disposition of surplus property. Ms. Ali.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as we usually come to you a couple of times a year, we have, uh, some surplus pol- uh, property that we need to dispose of. Um, most of it's surplus. We did add to that electronics recycling for some old iPads and materials, I believe iPad second generation, huh, um, that we're recycling through with an electronics recycler that they essentially will purchase those from us. All of this is in accordance with, uh, the disposal code and the statute, uh, five dash twenty-two twenty-two, and also in accordance with our administrative guideline seventy-three ten. So, the administration recommends that the Board of School Trustees authorize the Department of Buildings and Grounds, as well as the Department of Exceptional Ed, to dispose of the items listed in Exhibit A in accordance with their cond- condition.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. Heard the recommenden- recommendation as presented. Uh, do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Second?
And moved by Mr. Angel, and second by Mr. Hoffman. Any questions or comments from Ms. Ali?
We have a lot.
Just a good, going to comment for the benefit of the public. This is something that occurs every year. This is essentially a garage sale. And if you're interested, we've got such items as a damaged piano, rusted table, two rusted round tables, two rusted file cabinets, uh, and a variety of other things. So, if you're interested, stay tuned.
All those in favor signify. Any other questions or comments from this garage sale?
Do you want to give, um, Mr. Malasky's phone number?
Yeah. We have a reading of the whole list. That would be good.
I'm sorry, I missed who made the motion, second.
I think it was Mr. Angel with the motion, and Mr. Hoffman with the second.
Thank you.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And five point oh six, school-based therapy service contract with, uh, Presence Learning. Ms. Peskis?
Good evening, Mr. Warren, and members of the board. Um, this contract is with Presence Learning to provide speech and language teletherapy services for students at Eisenhower eligible for those services via their individualized education plan.
Thank you, Ms. Peskis. We have a recommendation to approve the contract between Crown City School Corporation and Presence Learning. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Babjack, and second by Mr. Hoffman. Any questions or comments from Ms. Peskis?
Are they currently providing services, or have they in the past?
This is our first time we're working with them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't recall the name, so.
Yep.
Any other concerns or comments from Ms. Peskis? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And then five point oh seven, Board of School Trustees, regular business meeting, time change. So, a- as we mentioned earlier, uh, in the beginning of the year, we had, well, this is a little bit of a different topic, I'm sorry, but our, um, scheduled board meetings were for seven o'clock. Um, I think with new leadership and some open discussion, uh, it's just been brought to our attention that we think that our families can still make it, make it home or make a six o'clock meeting, and it seems to be just honestly more convenient for everybody. Uh, so, we'd like to change the start time to the regular business meeting to six o'clock, back one hour from what was always seven o'clock, uh, for the remainder of the year. Do we have a motion to approve, or did Dr. Terrell might miss anything that should explain there? Pretty simple.
I think you're good.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
And second by Mr. Smith. Uh, questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Uh, item six, this evening, we have information items. We have, uh, superintendent discussion groups. Um, how about, we go, Mr. Smith, anything from Cedar Lake?
No.
Mr. Hoffman, anything from, uh, Winfield or Crown Point?
Winfield has had no meetings. The Crown Point Redevelopment Commission continues approving SOD grants and, uh, a good bit of the paving that you see going on within the ci- city comes from RDC funds. Um, Hundred Ninth Avenue is a phased project, and you can see that that first phase has been completed, and there'll be more work, uh, next year, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anything else anybody has to, to offer as superintendent discussion groups? If not, move to item six point oh two. Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Hardman?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, just a few items. Uh, we will be participating, uh, our kindergarten through second grade students in a, a universal screening for dyslexia. Uh, that will be taking place, uh, at the middle of the year when we do our benchmark assessments. Uh, you might have heard, uh, that as, uh, something from the state, um, that kindergarten through second grade, it is required one time a year that we do give a dyslexia screening. It is a part of our screening. We do it. There'll be three additional tests that are added to, uh, uh, our current screening, which will give us an at-risk, uh, identifier. Doesn't mean a student has dyslexia. It just means that potentially that they are at risk of it, and then interventions would be put in place, uh, and monitoring that, and if there's need for additional testing, uh, once we have interventions in place, uh, then there will be additional leveled screeners that would continue on to identify, uh, whether or not a child has, uh, dyslexia. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to just share is, uh, due to some, uh, funding, uh, grants that we received last year, uh, from, um, the Crown Point Foundation and a, a private donor, uh, we are expanding our birth to school into, uh, our non-title school buildings, starting at, uh, four-year-olds, and having some programming for incoming kindergarten, uh, students when we look at two thousand twenty, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two, as they're coming in. And then the last, uh, thing, we, we are, uh, in a process this year, you know, last year at the end of the year, uh, basically all testing was put on, put on hold, uh, including our, our ACT district testing, uh, of course, the state testing. Uh, we are, uh, preparing now to administer the ACT district test that would have been given in April to juniors, and we want to give that opportunity to our seniors this year. So, we will be giving that coming up on October the sixth, uh, and then on October the twenty-ninth, we have the PSAT NM SQT, uh, which is given to students in grades ten and eleven. So, these tests are, uh, being, uh, will be administered. Uh, we will accommodate those students that, uh, are distance learners, as well as those that are, are in, uh, in school, uh, to try to give everyone the opportunity that they need. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardman.
Director of Personnel, Mr. Akewa?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Uh, just warning, we are, uh, I'm, I'm just going to throw it in there, please to.
Mr. Akewa, if I can interrupt, you've got to go to the podium for the taping.
I appreciate it.
Thanks. Um, I just. Brian was about to come down the aisle and grab.
Yeah, that's okay. He even told me, reminded me. Thank you very much. Uh, I do appreciate it. I just want to make, uh, a couple of brief comments here, uh, from my department. First of all, uh, just a wonderful, uh, effort by all of our leaders in our school building, uh, regarding trying to find those individuals that we need to support our learners, given this unique environment we're working in. And that could be substitutes, a lot of the individuals you're hearing here this evening, getting approved position to support our learners. And I just have to say, after, uh, reviewing a lot of applications, I just want to personally recommend Brooke back there for our, uh, position for, uh, marketing and communication. Um, and a, a final, um, a comment I'd just like to make on behalf of our support staff, which a lot of people maybe don't realize, but I just want to go ahead and, uh, just personally thank those behind the scenes that are supporting the infrastructure or backend of our student management system, and, um, Chantel Pierce, who works, uh, in the business department, but the schedule changes and, uh, student management system, what she's doing to keep this thing, uh, uh, current and accurate, um, and the amount of time she's putting in, it's just, she's fantastic. Um, so, uh, there's a lot of folks behind the scenes, uh, supporting our efforts, and, uh, I just want to bring that to light this evening, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Akewa, I just wanted to thank you real quick for, uh, I know your voice is behind the message as well, but some of the communication on, uh, outages, I think the first couple of weeks, uh, we weren't ready for, you know.
Yeah.
We knew things were going to happen, but, um, and even sometimes when you have to send a message at nine and pull it back at nine-thirty to say, okay, we're good, I, I, I think they're very helpful as a, as a parent with, uh, the kids trying to deal with the, you know, let's hope in a couple of weeks we're back to green, but go, but in the future with the, the hybrid learning or the potential red, that communication on things like that are very helpful, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Before you sit down, I've got a couple of things. So, those of you who are familiar with the Wizard of Oz and the guy behind the curtain, uh, Mr. Akewa's going to not appreciate this, but he is the man behind the stats that we're seeing, the information, the data that we're posting on our website, and I appreciate his work, his department's work, our nurses' work, with all of that. But, uh, tonight, I'd like for you to talk just a little bit about, if, so we have the new table that's out there that talks through, uh, impact of COVID cases in our buildings and across our district that we're going to continue to update. But the state is getting ready to roll out, uh, dashboard for schools, and there may be some data or information that looks a little bit different. And if you would just kind of address that for us, so we can let people know why there's a difference, and why it's important for Crown Point.
I appreciate you doing that. I was going to maybe bring that up in, in the latter part of the meeting, and thanks for reminding me, because I do need to mention that. So, we really wanted to make an effort to try to help our families and folks in the community understand the impact of COVID inside our buildings, and that's, uh, we noticed a chart down at Avon, uh, that kind of gave us some guidance on how that looked and how we can update it every week, so that folks can sort of understand what that impact is. So, we did develop the chart. The chart basically tells us, based on any positive on our school campus sites, what was, what is the impact of that? In other words, how many folks are being asked to quarantine? Okay? So, that's what that chart represents. Now, it's very important to understand that this does not track positives. The state's pushing out information to tell us how many positive cases there are, and this can be a little bit misleading. I'll give you an example. Um, you could have an online learner who's never crossed the doorsteps of Crown Point Schools, and if they happen to test positive with the Health Department, that is a positive attributed, in the state of Indiana's eyes, a positive attributed to that school building, even though we were never really impacted by that. You know what I mean? Nobody was displaced. Nobody was asked to be, be quarantined. And that, that is, they're tracking one thing, we're trying to communicate another. Uh, did I explain that well enough? So, we just really want to continue updating our chart so that people understand what's happening in the building, and who's being impacted, and how many folks are being impacted. So, just, you know.
So, our numbers are the combined total of positive cases and those quarantined.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that building.
It'd be incredibly sensitive, too, because we do have to protect those individuals.
Right, that makes sense.
We can't release any medical information about folks.
Yeah, if it was just positives, it's pretty easy to start isolating.
Absolutely.
You know?
Uh, but.
Especially if you've got kids in school, and somebody's not showing up for a week. It's, I mean, it's, it's got to be a challenge for you guys to.
I might as well just go.
Protect patient privacy, so.
Right. Might as well just go ahead and thank, right now, our nursing staffs and our, our teams of support staffs that are helping, you know, monitor this and track this, and really make sure that we're, we're notifying the families that, that are impacted. So, yeah, it's been wonderful effort by everybody.
So, how deep does the layer of tracing go? Does the, does the individual school give you a.
Does the individual school give you a recommendation of their research or do they report to you and then you have to, is the research coming from central office or how much is being put on the principals of each state elementary school or nursing staff?
So much work has been done upfront. There are seating charts and flow charts and, you know, all this information about where students are, how they migrate around the building, where they're sitting, for how long, that's buses, that's the whole smash, it's sitting there. And when we are notified of a positive by the health department, the contact tracing must begin. The metric is the same, six feet for 15 minutes. So, you know, immediately we have this process where you open up a file and you start crunching the data, you know, to see how many folks are impacted and you have to have conversations with teachers to see, well, did you change your seating chart that day or, you know, the bus driver, was there a change in that seating chart, you know? And so you just start making that detailed analysis and then the phone calls begin. So, it's, it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of effort, but a lot of our hard work and planning started in July as we could anticipate ourselves being back in the building. So, again, I couldn't even count the number of hours.
I'd like to just make a quick comment because we've discussed this already, but there's a lot of misconception that mask or no mask, it's your six feet for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And I've just heard so much of what they have and it's just another challenge of what you're, what we're dealing with with tracing.
Yeah.
Many, most people probably know that already, but there's plenty who have asked that question, so, that's worth mentioning.
One other thing I'd like to mention too, just for clarification, if you've looked at that table, we indicate on there that it will be updated by, I believe it's 4:00 PM on Friday and that's simply so that if you'll notice there are zeros for many of the buildings, that you don't think, well, was it updated or was it not? Everything, so if it's a zero by four o'clock on Friday, it was a zero for the week. But also, we'll continue to update that as we find out information with different schools and update it throughout the week as well, based off of the information we get. It's not always, turnaround isn't real quick at times, simply because we have to give it time to work through the process of figuring out that impact and how far that goes. So for one building, it may be a turnaround pretty quick by noon or three o'clock that day. For another building, it may be sometime the next day before we get that information posted. That has nothing to do with trying not to get information to people, as much as it is making sure we get the right information to people and that is what we're committed to throughout this process.
Well, we have people making phone calls, doing contact tracing, as well as county possibly helping and so there's probably some collaboration needed between the two when they're, I mean, is it all on us or is it mostly on the county or?
It's mostly on us for our own environment. We're notified of who the positives are.
Okay.
And then it's our responsibility to, you know, really analyze our own environments, which we do very intensely.
Gotcha.
And if there's ever a question, we just err on the side of caution, you know, just to, just to be sure.
And if you recall, going back to the beginning, the county was going to do it all.
And then they couldn't keep up.
And so there's been a lot of changes and, you know, that's one of the things that we've asked for your patience with, we've asked for our co-ops' patience with. The rules continue to change, the expectations continue to change, from turning in all information to the county and then also turning it into the state to not turning it into the county and just turning it into the state. So again, our support staff, our principals, our nurses, especially our nurses, as they work with Artie to make sure that we continue to keep up with weekly webinars and different things, the information that's coming. And so that's why when we say it's data and information, that's why we mean, or why we say it's not just data points, because there's all this other backend information that has to be considered as well. And that's why we can't give just certain, if this happens, this is what we're gonna do, because it changes and it's just so fluid, that it's really an open skill and very subjective.
Yeah.
Sorry to put you on the spot, man.
You know, I was gonna mention it in my comments later, but I just, thanks for queuing me, that's good.
Thank you.
Anytime, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you.
Mr. Gianfermi, Director of Student Services and School Safety.
I just have one quick update. Back in July, we applied for the Indiana Department Homeland Security Safe Schools Grant. I'm happy to report that we did receive $86,652 for that grant, which will apply to our enhanced door lock project and security cameras, so, it's a big equipment grant for us and happy to report that we received it. Any questions on where we're going?
That's great.
Nice, thanks.
Director of Exceptional Learners, Paskus?
I just wanted to give you an update. One of the additions we made to our team this year was a behavior specialist who had some special credentials called BCBA. She's a Board Certified Behavior Analyst and I can tell you, in the two short months she's been with us, she has done a world of good for several students, teachers, parent professionals. She's working with parents, she's working with outside professionals that students may have. So her name is Laura Wade and she's not here, but I told her I was going to kind of give her a shout out tonight, so just wanted to give the board an update as that was one of the audit recommendations to add that position.
Do we have any parents of exceptional learners in the audience?
Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Dowling?
Good evening again. Happy to report as far as our enrollment for the school corporation, we're actually pretty flat this year. We did not see a reduction, which is good and unusual. Most of the people around us, with the exception of Hanover, have seen reductions. Second, as you might remember, this is our favorite time of year, it's budget time. Why isn't everybody smiling? Except Dr. Terrell.
We are.
Smiling on the inside.
Year to year.
So, as is usual, the October meeting serves normally as the adoption. Generally, we'll schedule a special meeting for the public hearing. A new procedure that Dr. Terrell and I have talked about is a work session to go through the budget with the board as a whole, as opposed to separately, just so that way everybody's hearing the same information on common questions. So when I...
Let me jump in right there.
You will.
I know in the past, we've kind of left it up to individuals to come in. One of my concerns is that all of you can hear the same information as we receive that. I also think it's important that we have that in public again, where our community can hear it and know what's going on with our budgets. Again, just to make sure that we're sharing as much information as we can. So I asked, as Katie and I have kind of talked through this process, I've asked her to just plan on us having a special session where we can just focus on that, not the other stuff that comes with it that might be distracting us, but that we can really focus on the budget process as we move forward with it.
Perfect.
And I will harass you for dates when I come to get your signatures on the docket. And that's all I have for you.
I told her to do it tonight, so she's being kind.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dowling. And we have our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Terrell.
So tonight, the thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, as all of you are aware, we've been working through our administration organizational chart here and trying to align, excuse me, what we do, how we support our schools, our principals, our teachers, our staff members. So we've had some pretty significant changes. I just want to bring it to your attention again here publicly. Again, really pleased with the amount of work that our central office team here has put together on this. Without additional support, people or administrators supporting education, to be able to do that is really great. Again, appreciate the addition of our Director of Communications. We can fill in that TBD chart that is on our website now with Brooke Allen. So Jim Hardeman is going to be our Chief Academic Officer and with that role, he will continue to really head up our curriculum efforts, our assessment efforts, really developing that continuum of education from kindergarten and before all the way through 12th grade. Working with him will be our Director of Elementary Ed, which will be Sabrina Ramirez. Director of Secondary Ed will be Mark Gianfermi and then our Director of Exceptional Ed will be Heather Paskus and we look forward to the three of them really being able to look at different issues that are going on and how it relates across the grade levels. And then also bringing in our exceptional ed learners and figuring out how do we encompass them into our normal curriculum and meet the needs that they have as well. So we're really excited about this. We think it's going to really give our elementary principals, our secondary principals, people to go to. Sabrina and Mark will be handling all day-to-day operations within our buildings. Questions that may come up, rather than having to call Artie or having to call Katie, they'll be able to just get ahold of one person, that person will walk down the hall and find out what is going on and get back with them as well. With that, Ms. Dowling will continue to be our Chief Financial Officer and then Mr. Akua will be our Chief Human Resource Officer, something he's asked for for a while to not just be personnel, but to be human resources because, you know, Mr. Akua, he's more than just dealing with problems, he's really there about the supports that come up as well and we appreciate that. So just wanted to bring that to all of you, so you can see the chart, it's found on our website under Administration and you can see the information that is posted there as well.
Appreciate it. Yeah, you're moving very quickly on a lot of items that came up just during the interview process and it's neat to see you moving forward with that stuff, even though you've, you're probably spending 90% of your time worrying about back-to-school plan and how to address that, but you still have other things going forward, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. I think we're headed right back to here with 7.0, so 7.01, live streaming board meetings. Have comments or suggestions for us this evening?
Firstly, I'd like to thank Chris Galoff, Brent Barber and Brian in the back here who are working with us this evening. We have a little experiment going on. Again, going back to the summer as we were meeting, you know, one of the things that came up were questions about sharing our meetings, whether that be through a video recording, whether it be through an audio recording. And so through that, we've really tried to look at some ways that we can do that yet remain professional, keeping in mind that it's not a public meeting, it's a meeting in public, but being able to share this information with our community members. So tonight, we gave them a pretty tall order, within four weeks, come up with a way that this could sound good. Being one of those who was sitting out in the internet world, listening to the meeting this summer that took place at the high school and trying to listen to that, understanding the challenges that went with that, we really want to make sure that if this is something we're going to do, that it's at a quality level that is acceptable and that people can really understand what has happened with the meetings. So we feel pretty good about this tonight. We're gonna go back and view it again tomorrow morning. But with that being said, and I know there's some different thoughts here representing amongst the board, but I'd like to bring a discussion or ask you to have a discussion about your comfort level with live streaming meetings or posting the video of the board meetings the morning after the board meeting on our website where people can go to watch the board meeting and listen to it. One additional advantage to this is it really helps us when it goes to record-keeping, to be able to go back and not just look at something that was passed two or three years ago, but to be able to go back to that video and really listen to the spirit of the discussion and to get the intent that is heard more from just reading it off of the minutes. So, you know, when you think about it that way as well, I think there's a lot of advantages to this, where we can go back and revisit issues that have happened in the past as well.
Gotcha. You know, I would like to, I would like to start just because you brought it up, the summer meeting that we had when we approved the back-to-school plan. I believe it was these gentlemen that were involved with it and we gave them a very, it was a very unfair ask. I think we might have had like two or three days' notice to try to figure out how to work up the auditorium and make that, make all the AV stuff work, so, yeah, we put, that was, that was an unfair ask for us to try to make that happen. So it's nice to see that we're experimenting with, with, you know, making it work in this room. You guys had no test run opportunity in that auditorium, so I appreciate that you guys are here today, making it work. Go ahead.
Actually, we did have a small little test run. We went in the morning with Dr. Lux.
That morning?
What it was, the air conditioner in the auditorium was not on when we were there.
Yeah.
So we're sitting in front row, we dive in, streaming it, the air handler was on, it's right above the stage, so that was taking all that ambient noise that night.
Yeah. I mean, for, you know, it would have been nice to have maybe four days a week, see you guys, appreciate you being here tonight.
Do we have any other, discuss this topic any further?
So is the main issue whether to stream or to record and then repost, is that the main issue?
Well, I think the first one is, are you, as a board, what are your thoughts on having a video record of the meeting? And then from there, I think we decide if it's something you want to use rather to livestream or if it's something you'd rather post after...
Right. I would be in favor of doing both, where we have, we have a recording of it that we can post to whatever our communication director, well, and that's, we also need to, she hasn't even started yet, so we definitely have to take in your expertise in this process and see what you recommend. But I would, I would be for streaming a live meeting, similar in the fashion that the city council has been doing for probably over a decade.
Yes, you've mentioned it, Dr. Terrell, that it's, it's not a, it's not an opportunity to, it's not a Facebook live session, it's not an opportunity to ask questions, it's just a viewing platform, go back and see what's going on in the school corporation for those that are curious.
So the platform that we're actually looking at right now, to make sure it's more of a professional-grade level, would be to use like our own YouTube channel?
Okay.
Where we would post all of our meetings on that channel. So, and that would afford us both opportunities to do it live and keep it posted?
Hold in our category.
Or we could wait and just post it after the fact.
Is there any way to tie in the programs up to high school? I'm all about benefiting the students and seeing if there's an opportunity to tie them in through TV or the app and making traffic, maybe the possibility of getting traffic to apps that are up to high school.
Let's ask the gentleman in the back of the room.
I'm sorry, I was...
He was doing his job, he wasn't listening.
The one behind the camera probably asked. What was the question?
So the question was, is there any way to tie in the high school students into this process, either through the TV or through, through the apps to bring traffic and give the students experience to benefit them?
I mean, that's a great question. You know, the experience is a good thing, but they, they have so many opportunities right now and so many responsibilities to cover games and broadcasts and broadcasting hours. We had the opportunity a couple of years ago to develop an app for the radio station and a student took on that responsibility and now he's working for Amazon doing that as a sophomore in college. So, those are cool things when they present themselves and I guess it'd be just, you know, a discussion from you all and what you want and see if we can make that fit with, and connect it to the students.
Your initial, your initial thought is they'd probably prefer to do a football game as opposed to come to the school board, right?
Unbelievable.
I can't believe that.
Which way is the best approach to limit how many need to be involved in the production?
A PTZ streaming, you know, where the cameras are fixed and one person can do the whole operation.
And our intention is this is a temporary fix when you see...
This is as temp as it gets. This is one, this is one step above the iPad.
But we're hoping it's a good step, a big leap.
Yeah, we're just, you know, like, we're learning, like tonight, this podium, people are putting their hands on it and the microphone's picking it up. Your mics are all different levels, so we're adjusting levels and so it's a learning process, but we've got a lot of notes back there.
This is an area that we've been behind as a school corporation for some time, so I appreciate it being tackled and this goes along with, you know, social media and remote learning even. I think we're behind going into COVID, which hurt us, you know? So I appreciate we're giving attention to this. I think any access we can give the public to more information, the better. The only concern I have with going live is if something happens and somebody goes to the podium, especially since we're opening it up for public comment and it's not appropriate for the live stream... for the live stream, is there a buffer? And so I only wonder if there should be a delay of a day to make sure that people tuning in aren't hearing things they shouldn't be hearing. And that's not for us to curtail speech. I'm only worried about, you know, this could get emotional at times, that's my only concern. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would echo that, and also what Dr. Terrell said, in that if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Okay. Well, you know, we had a decent discussion about it, something we've all, you know, been kind of wanting for a while, just wanting to do it the right way. So, Dr. Terrell, thank you for bringing to our attention and moving forward, and, you know, hopefully we'll have an update for potentially a next step, next meeting.
So, do you guys, are you comfortable this evening with making the decision about whether we go live or whether we post it 24 hours later? Do you want to wait and bring that back to the next board meeting? What are your thoughts, or?
My preference would be to come back, because I want, I do agree with Mr. Babjack's recommendation to get the new higher opinion on this issue.
Great point.
And then also to kind of evaluate how tonight went, just to make sure glitches and all that.
Sure.
But another, I mean, we meet prior to the next board meeting, we're all go, you can put it.
Would it require, does it require a formal vote to make that decision? Meaning, can we make that, can we have that, can we give you buy-in and then be broadcasting by the next meeting? Do we have to hold it off to, we have to hold it off a month?
Right, it's not a policy, it would just be a practice, so.
I think it seems, I mean, if the technology's there and it's available, and they're comfortable with it, and Brooke approves it and thinks it's a good idea, then why wait another thirty days?
So let me ask a follow-up question then, based off of our assumption that tonight's gonna turn out good, acceptable, why not at the level we want to get to, because we're gonna invest in the technology that we need to be able to do that with a one-man show and have it at a high quality? If this is adequate, are you guys comfortable with posting this tomorrow on our website, underneath our board, on the front page now, where we're posting board meetings and the agenda, just an additional link to view the video of this meeting? Yes.
I am comfortable with that, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Anything else, then, topic? We can move forward to seven point oh-two. We have other board business. If I could ask to start with something that Mr. Hoffman was speaking of with the library board. Mr. Hoffman, can you give us an update on the library?
Yes, it was too late to put on the agenda. I had a discussion with the head of the community library. The library has a board, and two of the appointees on the board are approved by the school corporation. So she wanted to know what the process was, and I said, well, we've got a meeting coming up. I said, we can probably approve her recommendations to fill those vacancies. One of them I know is Pat Schuster, who has been on the board, and I believe he's probably the president of the board, was very instrumental in the new library process. And I apologize, I don't know the name of the other individual, but I think his first name is Ryan, and he's head of St. Jude House. So with that information, I would move that we approve those two recommendations for the Crown Point Community Library Board.
It's Ryan Elenkowski.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Elenkowski.
Sounds correct.
Okay, we'll have to approve.
I'm over.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all's a favor, see if I'm missing out.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote carries five zero for, it's a Pat Schuster, and Katie's got Ryan and the proper pronunciation, proper pronunciation of last name, or?
I think it's Ellen Kowski, is that?
Okay.
Ellen Kowski, Ellen Kowski.
Thank you, Tom. So would you, are you gonna follow up on?
I will, I will contact her.
Thank you. Any other business or board discussion that we'd like to knock out?
Do we want to give an update on the, on the building? Does anybody want to comment on that? Just the progress, everything's going well over?
I can speak to it. It is amazing, as you go out there and see how far it's come in the last, since the last month, since our last board meeting. The back addition of classrooms has a roof on it now, beautiful as you look out on the leaves and the fields right now. The gym is under roof, and the floor has been poured, great addition to the space out there. They're working on the admin offices, the front entrance now, the nurses' office, the conference rooms as you go in. I'll tell you, our kids have been unbelievable, our staff, as they've worked through that, having been out there several different times. One of the neatest things I think they've done, they put up a plexiglass window at, right at little kids' level, so they can look out at the gym and watch the guys working. It's just, they said that's one of the highlights of the building, is as they walk by to be able to look in there and see what's going on. So it's come along very, very well. We expect those classrooms in the back to be finished by semester break, so over the Christmas break, we can do some switching of classrooms and then focus on the other parts that need to be updated as well. So kudos to the guys that are working out there, and especially our staffs. Our staff is there working through, continuing to have education in an already challenging time, even increased more so with this going on, but they're doing a great job.
Is this posted on our website?
That update is not posted on our website, we just received it. Would you like it?
Have we typically been posting it on the website?
We haven't.
I think it would be beneficial to post it on the website, so that they see the information that we're receiving and have an idea of the progress that's taking place.
Okay, we can make that happen.
Any other discussion or other business? Kind of, kind of circle back to the mention that this was not a topic before, and it goes to show convenience for something like what you came across, Tom. There's not enough time to get on a meeting, but it kind of helps some people that are looking towards us, and we've had situations possibly with the city where we could move something on the agenda that's helpful. So, thank you, and we can move forward to board statements of appreciation and recognition. We'll start with Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you again, now that we're live, and I think this is like the third month, fourth month in a row, but thank you to the teachers, the building leaders, our administration, for all the hard work they've done to get us back in the schools. And I know that that has always been the priority, to get the students back in school. We all agree that that's the best education it can get. And so it's been a lot of bumps in the road, and they've handled it so well. So we are, personally, I am so grateful for that. And the other one specific, and it's not to pay lip service to Dr. Terrell, but I need to, because I know that you have shown up in the buildings, I know that you have shown up at public events, I know that you have shown up at the high school for sports activities, theater activities, at the middle schools, and I just want to thank you for making time to do that. And I can't emphasize enough how much that means to our employees, to our people, that you listen and you take the time to care. I know even the athletes know this, that the superintendent's here, and it means something to them, and just your presence. And so I know you've made a concerted effort to listen and to do those things and make yourself available, and I think the public will see that, and I continue to look forward to working with you to make yourself more available. I think it's wonderful. So just want to personally thank you for listening and making these changes quickly, as was already stated tonight, and all your hard work, and just jumping and engaging, handling the transition with Dr. Lux, over to you. I think you've done a great job, so thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chris Smith, Mr. Babjack.
I would like to say thank you to Mark. I had a request from Mark this week to just kind of give me a summary of some of the stuff that he's accomplished and implemented in his role as Director of Student Services and Security. And as I was reading this list and just thinking about the stuff that, you know, that we've approved in the last four years, and man, you jumped right into that role, and there were a lot of improvements that have been made. So I believe in the flowchart, security is still going to fall under Mark? Is that correct?
That's right. Mr. Coulson, who's with us this evening?
That was one of the, that was one of the bullet points, the hiring of Mr. Coulson. So I appreciate all the work that you've done and got us off to a great start, kind of bringing us up to speed with all the changes that you implemented. Thank you.
And I think he's broken a Crown Point record with how many job titles he's had in four years. He's like, he's broken double digits here in the last record, right?
We still have that other duties as assigned as the.
There's a reason for it. He doesn't have his old section in that chart somewhere? We're not letting him get away, there's a reason for it.
I would echo that comment, the comment about the administrative reorganization. You and I talked about it individually, and I think that's going to be a far more efficient and appropriate allocation of our resources, so job well done.
Thank you. Mr. Angel?
So besides the other thanks to everybody involved with this COVID thing, and parents showing up tonight to view their opinions on what needs to be fixed, it is greatly appreciated, it is taken. All the information that we're using to make decisions is based on what we're getting from administration, county officials, state, so I don't think anybody has the right answer, but we're doing best with what we have to make those decisions with the information we're given. I'd like to thank the athletic department. This is trying times, and for them to be able to get approval through the county officials, to be able to have football games, host parents, fans, and we all know, I mean, I've been all at home, as much as you can socially distance high schoolers at a football game, I think they're doing the best they can do, and we're trying to make it work, so I just want to give kudos to Bill and his department and all the staff at the high school for making that work, along with the soccer games and everything else that's being done there, because I think kids really do need that release to be able to kind of try to get back to normal as soon as possible. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Angel.
I should give kudos to the girls' golf team, too.
Oh, yes, congratulations on qualifying to go to state this weekend.
I think you guys covered it, I echo the same, and ready to move forward from this evening and keep going next month, so. Any last comments from anybody, anything that we missed? If not, motion to adjourn.
Second?
One by Mr. Angel, and second by Mr. Hoffman. All's a favor, sing about by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, look, Gary.
Thank you all for coming.